All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCIM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we're doing first order of business as our minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the September 30th, 2019 regular session minutes as written.
Motion?
I guess I'll second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next to the October 7th regular session.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the September 30th, 2019 executive session.
Do we, I'm sorry, next was executive session. Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the October 7th, 2019 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the October 16th, 2019 strategic planning session minutes as written.
Yes, our fun does not just occur on Monday evenings, folks. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a proclamation. Veterans Day.
Madam Chair, I move to read and sign the Veterans Day proclamation.
Shall we read it?
Did I get a second?
Is there any, may someone second that?
Second.
Yes, please, for the record. Let's read that nice, loud, and clear for all to hear.
You want me to read it?
Absolutely.
All righty. Whereas on Veterans Day, America becomes one in honoring our veterans to commemorate their legacy of honor, pride, courage, and sacrifice. America is strong because of their profound love of this great nation. We as a nation must support our veterans, for we would not be in America if not for their sacrifices. And whereas on this day, we honor our warriors for continuing to secure and safeguard our borders, emulating our forefathers by carrying on the values and traditions that were instilled throughout the generations. They continue to serve in harm's way, keep them in prayer. And whereas on this day, we must be ever mindful of our veterans struggling with mental health issues, addictions, and homelessness. We as a compassionate nation must be proactive and work together to assist and guide them. And whereas on this day, we recognize and thank our Vietnam veterans for their service and sacrifice. Your wounds and scars continue to consume your lives. Many continue to suffer the effects of Agent Orange. Many lives have been shortened. Many families have to endure the pain of losing a loved one, suffering the after-effects of war. We will continue to stand by you. And whereas on this day, we honor our Gold Star families who have sacrificed the ultimate, keep them in your prayers. They will forever carry the legacy of their loved one through memories. For those who have loved ones missing in action or are held captive, continue to pray for their return. And whereas on this day, we renew our commitment to our children through guidance and education the importance of honor, respect, and appreciation for the valor and sacrifice our veterans and warriors have made. Continue to educate them on the history of this great nation. Now therefore, we the Select Board of North Reading do hereby proclaim that Veterans Day shall be celebrated on this 11th day of November 2019 in the town of North Reading. We encourage you to continue to display the American flag with pride on your homes, offices, town buildings, to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and warriors through ceremony and prayer. Given at the Select Board meeting this 28th day of October 2019 by Chairwoman of the Select Board, Catherine Manupelli.
So we have a motion to read and sign, and can we get a vote on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And would anyone like to have any further comment? Mr. Schultz?
Susan, you do a great job with our veterans. I know we're going to talk about you in a bit, and I think it's rather apropos as our United States Special Forces did a great job this weekend taking care of the mastermind of ISIS, and I think that is a win for America.
Amen.
These are active duty, not veterans per se, but to them, all the active duty people far and wide, and all the veterans, including special selfish shout-out to my father, who was a Vietnam veteran. God bless him.
Well said. Any further comments? Okay, I think it's a nice segue into our next order of business. So we're going to recognize our veterans agent, Susan Magna, who's here before us. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased that we have Susan here this evening. I think the board, you know, through its discussions in the budget process or otherwise, recognizes that we have excellent department heads in all of our departments, but we're especially excited this evening to be discussing a third party, the Department of Veteran Services, recognizing one of our department heads, Susan Magna, who's here this evening. Susan was originally hired by the town of North Reading as secretary in the town clerk's office, and I see the town clerk is here this evening, so thank you Barbara, in October of 2007. So she's been with us 12 years. In February of 2010, she was appointed Director of Veteran Services for the town. And from my discussions with her and others, she immediately began working on one of the larger events that we had, which was the 10th anniversary of the September 11th attack on our country. There were members that she put together with significant here, and I know many here in the room were in attendance at that. So that was only her, really a little over a year being in the position. And since then, she's continued moving forward, you know, at times quietly in the background, helping all of our veterans with their needs, whether it be paying their bills, paying their rent, getting access to quality health care, facilitating their interaction, not just with the state government, but with the federal government through our VA facilities. I'm sure she spent countless hours at both Bedford and Jamaica Plain, helping our veterans. To the point where, on a couple of occasions, I've gotten letters from folks outside of North Reading who have said, hey, I ran into Susan and she gave me some great advice, you know, which is fantastic to hear as well. So we're really fortunate in the work that Susan has done. Most recently, as I think we're all aware, Susan put quite a bit of effort, not only in coordinating the visit of the wall that heals here to town in August, but also securing it coming here. And that was all done pretty much in the background by Susan, you know, talking with the different departments that would be involved, including Parks and Recreation, which is here this evening. I know Maureen was onsite, and that Lynn and Marty and the folks in the department were very helpful with the visit. But working on that before it showed up in front of us in January of this year, when we learned it was going to be coming to visit. And so we get to see all these things firsthand and benefited from it, but the State Department of Veteran Services recognized that as well. So last week at her conference in Lemonster, I believe, is that right? The State Department of Veteran Services recognized our Susan Magna as the Veteran Service Officer of the Year. And so we're here this evening to congratulate her. Susan is accompanied by her partner Larry, who's sitting there. Larry, if you want to raise your hand, say hi. And also Al DeSalvo, who's a member of our Veterans Events Committee and has been active in helping Susan with her efforts. We thank you both for being here this evening. I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair. We thought this was a great opportunity to recognize Susan, hopefully to take a photograph with her and with the award as well, if that's okay.
Definitely, sure. I know the members have comments. Mr. O'Leary?
I tell you, just the, you talk about a perfect venue for this, for this wall. I mean, it's like it was made for it. And you had the vision.
Oh, yeah.
You had the vision, and you must have taken measurements ahead of time, because it really did fit perfectly. And the, you know, the attendance was fantastic. I'm sorry, the coverage wasn't as good as it should have been, you know, as far as television, but it wasn't due to lack of events, but I'll tell you, you know, my wife and I, Sue and I were down there virtually every night, and we saw it late at night, when nobody, you know, like, middle of the night, you had people manning it, and it was absolutely fantastic. What a terrific, terrific opportunity that you, again, you had the vision. Some of us were a little bit skeptical at first, I'll admit, and I'm glad you talked us into it, because it was fantastic. What a wonderful tribute and wonderful opportunity for the town and the area, the whole community, area communities come out. So congratulations, and congratulations on your award. Well deserved.
Mr. Walmer?
I have known Susan for years from the SSAT work we've done, and Susan's always been a great advocate for the vets, the disabled in town. And her heart is in the right place. I've always been impressed from that point of view, and I've also watched her have to leave many meetings, because people are coming day in and day out looking for her services. So everything Susan's done has been great, and I, you know, I was honored to speak at that night at the wall, and it was very, very, very impressive and very, it was motion for me afterwards, actually, so.
Maybe, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it was really very impressive. So I have always appreciated everything you've done, and it's been an honor to be with you.
Mr. Schultz?
Granted, I live across the street from him, so I didn't have far to go, but I was over there every night, and it was really nice during the day, but it was absolutely stunning at night when it was all lit up, kind of glowing in the dark. And a couple of things, it was, it was just an amazing event for a lot of reasons. I just mentioned my father. I found his bunkmate, who passed away in Vietnam, on the wall, which was really cool for me, because it was, you know, I wasn't around back then, but those guys were. It reminds me of, I have an eight, or a child who's a senior in high school right now, and I was thinking, back then, kids that age were like six months away from being on a plane going across the ocean. It really kind of sat on me. And another thing that really touched me was, it wasn't so much the wall, it was, it might have been a Tuesday night when everything came in, Tuesday or Wednesday, whenever the truck came in, the faces and the tears on the veterans as that truck came by really struck me, and it was just an amazing event. It was very cathartic and well done. I can't say enough superlatives. It was really a great event. And Steve's right, I think you had an inch to spare on each side of that yard, of that grass. I mean, it literally was shoehorned in, yeah, perfectly. It was just a tremendous event, well done.
I couldn't agree more. I think we're just so fortunate to have you. I could cry now thinking about that night. I was there at night doing a shift and...
I saw you there.
Was so honored, was just so honored to, to be there. And once you were there, that, just the feeling in the air, it was just awesome. And I agree, I wish we could have kept it. I loved it. And I also found one of my neighbors, her maiden name I saw was on there, and I called her, and she said, oh my God, I think that's my uncle. It ended up, she brought the kids down, and it was. So they were just so excited to find that and see that. So I just want to thank you so much. It was just a great thing for our town. It made me so proud, and it was just wonderful. Thank you.
I agree, and I thought, I think that even though the delivery ceremony of that wall that heals, I, I'm going to echo everything that they all said, and just let you know what a valued employee you are. Even from the delivery of that wall, that was something just amazing to be in attendance at, to see how stirred people were for that and for the purpose behind that, what that wall was about, and to know that you brought that here and you coordinated that effort, and that was amazing. And I also think that there's all of these different occasions that you commemorate with us and for the town, and coordinate for us to be able to have a place to go and voices to be heard, and all the coordination that goes into all of these things that you plan for us. And you're sort of the person that wears your heart on your sleeve, but you're, you're always there to bring to us and highlight to us what the, this population that you serve directly needs, and to help bring it to our attention. From the littlest things that you do, like those coins that you got to give to members that are about to go away, to just give them some commemorative piece from us as a community, to know that we're thinking of them, to the monumental things that you did, all of that effort and work, being one of the only communities that that wall that heals was given to for that timeframe. It was just tremendous. And that, all of the efforts that you do, from those smaller things that are really monumental things, to those larger things are amazing to us, and we're so grateful that you're here and working on these efforts, highlighting to us what this particular segment of our community needs, and how many veterans there are out there that maybe people don't even know about or notice. And I love when you come to do the budget hearing, when you take that opportunity to, to highlight, here's the need, here's what I'm working on, here's how many cases I have, and here's the areas of improvement that we can make. So I think you should keep doing that. I hope we're not commemorating you tonight, because you're going somewhere. I hope you're sticking around. And I just want to say thank you, from all the simpler acts that you do, to the larger acts that you do, all the highlighting that you do to us about this community and what this community needs from us, and what we, as a community, can do to remember, especially the veterans. So thank you for everything you do. And do you want to have, do you want to say anything?
I just want to, as we said, I had the vision for many years. But again, I'll reiterate, it wasn't, you can't do it as one person, it's a village, it's a village that makes it happen. And, you know, I have my right arm right here in Maureen, and Marty, and Larry, putting up with, putting up with me, my long hours, and, but he was there every single day, working with me on the long hours as well. And then all the volunteers, and just to hear the stories of the kids that I'm hearing when I go places, that, you know, they really took the time to have them work with the educational piece of it. And it just, you know, it's just something that I feel that the kids want to learn, and they really do. They take an interest in it. And even my nephew was so interested, he came back every day in between shifts from work, and, you know, helping the elders, and out in their wheelchairs, and learning their stories, and that's what it's all about. I mean, you don't want the history to go away. You know, you want it to keep on them, and, because as they all get older, I mean, I raised the war, you know, all of a sudden, the history books now are like huge to them, and everything's history, 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 and reading about those things, like, those are things they should be doing when they're younger, too. So, but to be able to bring pieces of history like that here, it says a lot, you know. So as far as the award, I was, you know, totally dumbfounded. I'm actually literally up in my room icing my sore back. When I picked all my names, I got a call from the, from the secretary afterwards, but it didn't congratulate me, but I really was totally surprised by the whole thing, and, you know, but it's, it is a work I love. It's a, I put my heart and soul in it, I do, and I enjoy every minute of it. It's the best thing I've ever done for a job, so. I don't call it a job, really. It's more like a way of life.
Great. Mr. Gilberto?
Before we hopefully take a photograph, I just want to recognize a couple of other folks. So Susan is an active member in our human services team, two other members of which are here. So Jen Ford, the Youth Services Director, is in the back. Hi, Jen. And then Mary Prenney, the Elder Services Director, is also with us, and I know Mary made sure there was a special surprise in Sue's office when she got back from her conference this week by decorating it. So Mary, thank you for doing that.
It's a pleasure and an honor working with Sue almost every day. She did a great job in the wall, she does a great job at parades, but she does a great job every day, working with people that she truly cares about, compassionate about, and she gets the job done. It is an honor working with this woman.
Thanks, Mary. And I also want to recognize Amy DeChar in the back from DPW. Thanks for coming tonight, Amy.
I just wanted to say something. Where I worked in the veterans, it's obvious, so I know what Sue does every day, and she does make a huge difference in people's lives, and she makes sure that they're not homeless, they're fed, if they have medical needs, and this, she does it every single day, and she does it in a far greater scale than I ever did. And she just blows doors on, on things like that, and people are so appreciative of her, and she just makes a difference in people's lives every single day. So it's, it is an honor to have her here. She is definitely a great asset.
Thanks, Barbara.
That's the same, and I was going to say, you guys are all recognizing the big events that you see her do, but we, she had a wall for many years with veterans, and now she's down the hall, but just seeing the day-to-day people that really count on her, like, they're her, they're, she's their life director. They come in, and without her, there's a lot of souls out there that wouldn't be around right now. I think she really is an emotional support, and she, boy, she dig deep, looking for the services they need, and she really helps them. And, you know, I'm a mother of a son who's serving right now, and so I'm just so appreciative, like, what she does, for everyone that serves. It's amazing.
That's great. You're a mother of a son that's serving right now, too, right?
I have one that's still serving now. Did you hear that?
Anyone else want to add any comments? We like the good stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe we could offer a final round of applause and then take a picture. Congratulations. Mary, will come around the front?
Yes.
Yeah, like it or not, you're in a picture.
This way up.
And the other side is a minute woman, you know.
A minute woman. I was going to ask him, and while he wanted...
I was just going to finish that. So all the awards that were given officially, they go to all women.
Is that a Jagger Ruffian statue? Or is that...
I don't know. Ready?
All right. All right.
Hold on, one second.
Oh, yeah.
You have to come in. Your hand back up. Yes. And here.
Do you have a last name, or is it Larry the Cable Guy?
Someone's camera's ready. Keep that for your last name.
That's me. Oh, everyone's looking.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. It's Grady, by the way, as he always says, always.
Oh, Grady is the last name?
It is.
Is it like Ari anymore?
Oh, yeah.
It is? Sorry.
You don't want to stay? Come on, Mary. I don't either. Fun. I don't, I don't either. You'll have to earn your pay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That was so nice.
All right.
And look who's left here.
So our audience...
Our perfect attendance people.
We're going to get an award for you guys.
We expect one now.
All right, we are on to next order of business, which is board members' reports. Mr. O'Leary?
Nothing other than we continue to proceed and progress on the water project, and hope to come to some conclusion rather shortly. Getting a lot more cooperation from the town of Andover, and moving forward on the permitting process, so hopefully we'll have an update in a month or so. Things are looking, things are progressing.
Mr. Walmer?
Just for the COA and the SSAT, I thank you for signing their application that came back officially from AARP. It's a lot of initials. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of acronyms going on here. But anyways, Kate signed, and then they're going to regroup. I think they're coming to us either on the 4th or the 18th to present what the next steps are and how they're going to implement that for the town, so as to make us age-friendly. And there's a, there's a very specific plan that they're following, so they've been, as their liaison, they've been kind of writing me, letting me know what's going on. I've been participating in some of their meetings, which is good. I continue to stalk the EDC, just to try to provide some input from the outside. And then Andy and I have been going to the facilities' master plan. You're, you're the liaison. I'm just kind of sitting, and I know we have, you'll talk about that, I'm sure. And then on the CPC, you know, Mike Roberto, Danielle and I are at least planning to work on some sort of, when the, when the strategic plan, the 10-year strategic plan is done, to come up with some sort of a executive summary that the town can understand easier than what is being presented right now. So that'll, that'll take a month or two to get together, I would imagine. But, and I think, but MAPC is done like the first week of November, and then, and you may be talking about this later, so I don't know.
Well, I do, Madam Chair, just related to that, so I believe that the town planner is working on a summary to be included in the final version of the master plan, rather than separate from it, in maybe more North Reading speak.
Right.
In terms of the particular issues, because I know there's a lot of sort of generic terms that were used in some of the visioning sessions, and that was some feedback that we got from, from residents. So I think that's something that you may see a draft of sooner rather than later.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Schultz?
A couple of things. Last week, at the pleasure of attending the Economic Development Committee Business Forum, we had Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Walmer there as well. We probably had, what, 30, 40 business owners there, I'd say. It was really great turnout. It was a lot of, giving them some concepts we had for ideas as far as wastewater, road traffic improvements, infrastructure improvement, zoning changes, but it was more to listen to what they had to say. And we got a lot of good feedback from the business community. We'll keep pressing on that. And today, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce. They put on a luncheon at the fire, the state, it was the police-fire luncheon, and on behalf of the business community, just want to thank fire and police for everything they do, and how they help our businesses be safe, and it was a great event and a nice turnout. Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I just wanted to also say that it is First Responders' Day officially, so I believe that's why they had the luncheon. I couldn't make it, but I do thank our first responders for everything they do, and I'm glad that they're there to do it. And I'd also like to thank everyone who came out to town meeting. It's always a pleasure to have such a big crowd there and have everybody participate. I'd like to see it happen more often, and I know there's not always passionate articles, but it's nice to see everyone come out and participate in their government.
That's it? Good. And I just want to thank my colleagues, because after that, we got together to work on our strategic plan, which we'll be reviewing briefly this evening, and it'll be available, is available on the town's website. And you, you're tracking changes, Mr. Gilberto, so people can see what's, what's changed, correct?
For this, for this evening, I will review the changes on two slides.
Yes.
And then we'll post the final approved version on the website.
Final version.
Without the changes noted. It'll be just a clean copy.
You're not going to leave the track changes online?
If folks would like, but...
All right, so...
I can't wait to read it, I guess.
So, so, or Mr. Walmer?
Thank you.
We'll post it for you.
You're the one.
You're the one.
Hold on.
yard, working to improve our public relations and communications through the grant-writing project coordinator position, which we're looking to fill within the administration office, our membership in the AARP age-friendly communities program, appropriating funding for electronic records retention, which we're going through the procurement process for obtaining state grant funding for the electronic permitting system, which is up and running here in the town hall, and be rolling out more information on that in the coming months. And then the RMLD installation of the LED streetlights, which was completed in 2018 as well. Another great accomplishment for us here in town, working with RMLD. And just continuing right along, and it's very difficult to read from this viewpoint, so I apologize, but I'll just call out what was added to the objectives and what was deleted. So what was added is in, is in blue, if you can see the colors, and what was deleted is listed as a strike through. So we added the permitting design and construction of the water system improvements. That's been on there, but we changed the timeline to reflect the working timeline that we have right now, which is 2019 through 2021. Then we stipulated the change in the wastewater plan, which is more focused on the commercial areas and a timeline through 2027, with an update to the timeline for the financing plan to be this year or next. Permitting and approvals to be determined and construction beginning to be determined as well. And then moving along, the time and attendance benefit system, benefit solutions for our employees. We're looking to do that in the 2020, 2021 timeline. Completing and evaluating the facilities master plan, so that's something that is in the custody of the DPW and the Facilities Master Plan Committee. I can tell you that they will be meeting on, I believe, November 6th or is it 5th, to evaluate proposals from three firms, and hopefully they'll be making a recommendation for awards shortly thereafter. We do have the property located at Nine Mill Street that we need to complete the disposal of, so that's been added to make sure that we address that as an objective. There's a modification to leveraging the use of available town-owned land to include conservation for open and passive recreation purposes. The evaluation and the implementation of the community master plan, so that is the townwide master plan that the Community Planning Commission's been working on for the past 18 months to two years. We'll be really looking at rolling out the implementation of that in 2020. Intersection safety enhancements, I know that that's something that's gotten quite a bit of attention in recent months, and the Department of Public Works has submitted a funding request to advance that along to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for their consideration in this coming capital round of funding. In addition, for exploring the viability of a dog park for 2020, 2021, that was also something that was added here. And then finally, including shared services for municipal services, you know, basically, we tried to consolidate that to evaluate in the alternative delivery and including shared services as an option, as well as the implementation of the AARP age-friendly community. So we've been accepted the program. Now it's a matter of implementation. We have that listed for 2020 through 2022. So that is sort of the express summary, for those watching at home, of what took place over about four hours of discussion at the meeting on October 16th. I know the board members put quite a, put quite a bit of time into reading the plan and commenting, and it was very productive and for the benefit of the community. We summarized it all here. There are additional slides, which I'm not going to run through here, but they will be posted online when we, assuming the board votes favorably on this.
And one of the things I wanted to point out that seems to come up as a pretty active topic of discussion amongst the board members are the moving target dates of the water and wastewater. So I think what we are, we listed here, the permit design and construct water system improvements relates to the current contract of providing potable water from Andover and the improvements required to expand upon that as contemplated in our current 99-year contract. And the second piece of that is the wastewater plan, which is, we took out sort of underneath and put a bullet list of all the moving pieces involved in that. And that portion of things would be, although it's moving together with, we're focused in on completing those water system improvements for the water delivery right now, but we have not forgotten. And this keeps coming up also with, with residents and the commercial property owners. We are still on target or working towards those goals with respect to the wastewater solution through the Main Street corridor and down through Concord Street. And we still do have two members of the board actively participating in both of those. And we, we did have Mr. Marsieri as our non-board assistant specifically working on those as well, because he had a wealth of knowledge with regard to those things. So it looks like we've split these up and, you know, put a deadline down, downstream, so to speak, no pun intended, but we are still working towards both of those goals and wanting to assign it a more realistic goal for the, for the wastewater portion of things, because that seems to be having multiple moving parts that have to be resolved too. So, does anybody have any comments? Mr. Walner?
I, just on, this is just a formatting thing to make it easier for people who actually read these documents. Is it progress assessment could be broken up into older? I think it's an easy way to format and I think it doesn't change any of the facts, just the older things that we've done, maybe be categorized in one thing, or more recent be categorized in another, and ongoing being categorized in another. So that way, it's in three pieces. And then you can reorder it from that. It just makes it easier to understand what we're doing as opposed to just being scattered. And in the same thought, a little bit harder to do on the objectives, we also try to break that into maybe infrastructure priority. We get a little controversial, so we don't have to do that this year, but just try to break it out into, you know, infrastructure versus whatever categories we can find, just to make it more readable for the public to see. And if you need some help in doing that, I'd be happy to volunteer and.
Thank you.
Do that with you.
But you have to keep in mind that Mr. Gilberto likes it to be to one page.
One page.
That's fine. This is what you get.
That's his objective.
Anywhere we can put a line through things makes him very happy.
I brought my glasses for this purpose, to be able to read it, so.
From, from our strategic planning, I don't think any one of these goals is higher on the priority list than others. Of course, we all need water, so we, we need, we need to make sure that is in place, and we can't live without water. So that, that would obviously have a, that would be a high, high target priority.
Yeah, that's why that may.
We haven't assigned these 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 value. They're, they are all at priority number one for us as a board, but that's really part of why we put them as the objectives and try to be realistic every year when we analyze this, to figure out how close are we to achieving that goal and, and keeping it on target, so.
Yeah. But again, maybe like in the objectives, I agree, that's a whole nother issue. But maybe just infrastructure and what falls under infrastructure, if you, if you will, technology, if you will, you know, parks wrecked, because you have like the dog and the rail trail. They potentially be categorized together, just so that it's easier to see, you know, what we're doing in different categories. So if you'd like me to, I'd be happy to come down just to help with the categories and make it not controversial.
He's sweating right now. You can see him sweating. I'm only kidding. All right. Any other comment? Anybody have any other contributions, comments, questions?
Nope. I believe we've prepared a motion.
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to approve this strategic plan for 2021 and beyond.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Gilberto, do you have a slide for the next? Or we just have that in our.
I have the, I have the policy to put up on the screen. It is in a PDF. I, I really, you know, I, we've called it a policy. If you've looked at it, and I'm sure the board members have, you see that it's more like a procedure, showing a step-by-step of how the process would be followed. And what we've, what the DPW Director and I have tried to do is take comments from some board members, the board's discussion, the existing assessment bylaw, which I provided a copy of, it's chapter 25 of our general bylaws, and our best recommendation, and try to assemble all of that together into effectively what is a procedure. And so going through this, you know, what we've, we've treated this, the law recognizes two types of streets. Accepted streets, which have been accepted by town meeting and for which the town owns the fee. And that's, you know, we just had Little Metal Way come up here, you signed off on, or something that will be recorded at the registry deeds, and the town owns the land that the street is located on. And then private or unaccepted streets, which the town does not own the fee in. But in reality, what ends up happening in the field is we have three categories of streets. We have accepted streets, which I described, unaccepted streets, which we maintain because we plow them. There is a layout on the, on these streets. If you look on a plan, you see that there is a shared, there are boundaries of specific parcels and a shared accessway. And there's a number of those in towns. I think, I think it's over four miles worth of that road that we're talking about. And then we have this third category of these roads that are, there is no layout. And we've talked extensively about the Swan Pond Road situation. Traveled Way is another one that comes to mind along the, the east side of Martin's Pond. It's another great example of a, a road that's in that sort of private street in that there is no layout for it. But the town does maintain it, meaning that we send trash trucks through it. We plow it. So I kinda put that as a premise in the whole thing and where this came from. And we tried to build off of those three factors and to give the board really a starting point for what would be a board discussion. I can walk through kinda how we envisioned it.
Sure.
If you wanted. I mean, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna talk longer than folks want. But, you know, what we've done here is tried to take the existing chapter 25 standard that it applies to street sidewalks and storm drains and to apply it to these parcels that we're talking about here, meaning using the Swan Pond Road example. And I divided them up this way, because under the town's bylaw, if there was in fact a layout, there's already a prescribed process for street acceptance, where the town does take the fee in the road and it does get accepted by town meeting. And then we go and make the improvements. And we can even bond those improvements over, you know, multiple years for a payback through assessment. But as I've said before, we can't do that for the private ways for which there isn't the layout. So, you know, taking that, we, we looked and used the 50% standard, which our, our bylaw under chapter 25 for assessment states that the town shall provide 50%. There isn't an option for us to provide less than that here. And what I added to it was that we would not pay an assessment based on abutting town-owned land. And that, that reflects the conversation that the board had on September 30th, where we were looking to go 50-50, so to speak, with the residents, but not pay anything more for the portions of land that are town-owned. This is where it gets a little, I think, more complicated. You know, here, we've said that for a project to be considered, there would be a letter signed by the owners of all the properties abutting or directly impacted by the proposed project to be submitted to the DPW. So what happened is we received a warrant article that was signed by multiple residents two years ago. It was a citizen's petition. It went on the town meeting warrant. I couldn't say whether or not that article had all of the abutting property owners, but I believe that it did. What it didn't include was a release for us to be able to go on the property and make the specific improvements. It simply supported funding to do the improvements. So we tried to advance that further, that these projects would be coming with all of the property owners in agreement and in support of the proposed project. I don't know that that's gonna be acceptable to the majority of the board based upon the conversation, but I wanna point that out, that that's what we put in here. And the reason it doesn't say what the, if I were to compare it to the general bylaw for regular street acceptance, it would say that 50% or more sign off on it. But we all know for these projects, with only 50% signing off, you're not really gonna have a successful project unless you do a very, it's a very small area. So the board may wish to consider finding some sort of a middle ground to advance the process, so to speak. What I tried to do is, you know, reflect what happened here. There are projects where we can come up with a cost estimate on our own very easily. And then there are projects where we need outside assistance. So I put that to the DPW Director to identify whether those resources are needed and that the Director would submit a request for funding for the resources, either through the regular capital process or through the non-capital process, a small capital process of the budget to be submitted to me, to be forwarded to you and for consideration as an operating budget request. So that's intended to kinda lay out that process here. And I think that was a source of frustration for the, some of the residents on Swan Pond Road in that they were not afforded. When, when they came forward and we said, we can't really even give you a reasonable estimate without getting resources identified, or identifying additional resources to help us with the, the engineering work, you know, that was a step that didn't exist previously, because the projects weren't necessarily as complicated as this project has been. So I've tried to reflect that here. So it would be only after that reasonable cost estimates available that we would move to a hearing with the residents, where we would invite them to come forward, to be provided the costs and afforded the opportunity to ask questions about the proposed project. And again, borrowing from chapter 25, the existing bylaw, we would have a public hearing where there would be a not-to-exceed number provided. And that's the exact language that's provided in the, in the, in the bylaw, from my understanding, with the, in a, in an assessment of what it would be per property parcel. So normally for these assessments, or I should say, often for these assessments, they are done on a per linear foot basis, but we saw how complicated that can become when you don't have a layout or when the town has town-owned land involved. So we, we put it as the board identified in its September 30th discussion to have it be per property parcel. And I think there's also language in there that basically says that there could be a lump sum payment rather than individual property owners, and it could, could be agreed upon within the residence. So I think from a standpoint, if there's gonna be a 50-50 cost share, and to use the Swan Pond Road example, half of it is $175,000 for the town and half is for the residents. We're not necessarily concerned who's coming up with the funding, but we want to make sure we have the total amount secured, wherever it may come from, to match the town's portion, so we can enter into a contract. So this tries to allow the flexibility for us to do that here. So once, once we've then obtained the releases from all of the property owners to be impacted by the project, we would then have a, the project being put on a list for construction as funds would become available. So I would envision this being, there would be, there would need to be, in all likelihood, a capital project request submitted to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for an unaccepted road to be approved, because I'm assuming that the project would, in most cases, exceed $25,000. The release, we've talked with town council about what this would be, what would be involved with this. And it would really be, unfortunately, if we didn't wanna go down the road of the surveying and delineating the, where the property would end and where we want the road to be laid out, which from the feedback we got, both from the residents and from the board, we didn't wanna do, it would be a more general release, meaning that it might say that, that they're agreeing for us to put the road in, you know, a wide swath of land, wider than we ever intend to use, but we may need to, because we don't know what we're gonna find when we're in the field. So this is intended to really identify that. If we wanted to really get into a much more specific layout, then you might, we might find ourselves in a situation of having to do some more engineering work than we necessarily want to do on these projects. There's a directive in here, you know, next that the DPW would request the funding for the, the project, in line with the cycle for cap. And that's the exact language that's provided in the, in the, in the bylaw, from my understanding, with the, in a, in an assessment of what it would be per property parcel. So normally for these assessments, or I should say often for these assessments, they are done on a per linear foot basis, but we saw how complicated that can become when you don't have a layout or when the town has town-owned land involved. So we, we put it as the board identified in its September 30th discussion to have it be per property parcel. And I think there's also language in there that basically says that there could be a lump sum payment rather than individual property owners, and it could, could be agreed upon within the residence. So I, I think from a standpoint of, there's going to be a 50/50 cost share, and to use the Swan Pond Road example, half of it is $175,000 for the town and half is for the residents. We're not necessarily concerned who's coming up with the funding, but we want to make sure we have the total amount secured, wherever it may come from, to match the town's portion so we can enter into a contract. So this tries to allow the flexibility for us to do that here. So once, once we've then obtained the releases from all of the property owners to be impacted by the project, we would then have a, the project being put on a list for construction as funds would become available. So I would envision this being, there would be, there would need to be, in all likelihood, a capital project request submitted to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for an accepted road to be approved, because I'm assuming that the project would, in most cases, exceed $25,000. The release, we've talked with town council about what this would be, what would be involved with this, and it would really be unfortunately, if we didn't want to go down the road of the surveying and delineating the, where the property would end and where we want the road to be laid out, which from the feedback we got, both from the residents and from the board, we didn't want to do, it would be a more general release, meaning that it might say that, that they're agreeing for us to put the road in, you know, a wide swath of land, wider than we ever intend to use, but we may need to because we don't know what we're going to find when we're in the field. So this is intended to really identify that. If we wanted to really get into a much more specific layout, then you might, we might find ourselves in a situation of having to do some more engineering work than we necessarily want to do on these projects. There's a directive in here, you know, next that the DPW would request the funding for the, the project, in line with the cycle for capital funding. So that, that's to kind of spell out for the town, hey, here's how the window of, here's how the coordination of the schedule will work. They need to submit generally by October 15th in order for it to be considered for the next fiscal year. And again, I'm trying to meld our existing capital process into this whole process to make it, to make it work. And then the project would be scheduled upon the approval of town meeting, you know, no different than any other capital improvement project would be, would occur. The final assessment would be the lower of either the actual per parcel cost based on 50% of the total construction cost divided by the number of parcels, or the estimated assessment quoted at the public hearing. Again, that's language, that's an intent taken directly from the existing Betterment bylaw, chapter 25, for street acceptance. So we just are taking exactly from that. The town would not advance the projects until the residence portion of funds has been collected and deposited in the appropriate town gift account. This does establish that the recommendation of some members, that there be a, a timeline from the town meeting vote in order to, for the receipt of funds. And in this case, we have it at 90 days. The board may wish to discuss whether it wants to have a window and what that appropriate window would be. If all funding was not submitted, then the roadway improvement project would be canceled and the town's appropriation would be returned to the general fund. Again, that's something the board will have to determine. Temporary or permanent construction or utility access easements would have to also be granted. You know, I envision it probably being a single release that's very broad in terms of what our, what our ability to access the property would be, you know, absent us getting into some engineering design and putting on a plan exactly what, what we're looking for. The procurement process, I mean, these projects mostly work by a combination of town personnel going in and doing the preparation work along the route to be paved, maybe even laying down the gravel base or improving the gravel base. And then we have existing contracts that we generally draw upon for paving that we would presumably be drawing upon. But it is possible that we might determine that we want to bid out a project separately because of the complexity or because we don't believe the town's annual contract, you know, has the capacity to allow it. Annual contract, the town's contractor for annual paving may not have the capacity for it. But generally, we, we work off of a regional contract that we procure with Middleton and with Linfield jointly. And here we have it, that the responsibility to repair and maintain the project site would revert back to the abutters. You know, I don't know what the board's intention is with regard to that. I'm merely trying to, to, you know, represent here who actually owns the property. We do not own the property at that point in time. It still would be privately owned. The board may wish to consider that that not be a condition and that the board wants to take on the responsibility for, for maintenance. We already know that for the stormwater, it's highly likely that the State Department of Environmental Protection is going to require the town to be a stakeholder in the maintenance of that system. It would not surprise us one bit for them to say that that'd be the case and that it'd be memorialized in a permit for that matter. But we would also reserve the right to maintain the roadway for public safety, which is the minimum standard that we have the authority under state law for at this point in time. And then finally, upon completion of the project, the public shall retain the right of easement to use the roadway indefinitely. So, you know, we don't, it's unclear whether we technically have the right, you know, the town has the right to pass and repass over a road such as Swan Pond Road. And a great example of it is Traveled Way, where we had one individual try to identify that the road was a private way and restrict the public's access. And the problem with that for us is, well, we're sending a trash truck and a plow down that road. For us to say that it's now a private way really contradicts our ability to do that. And of course, you know, through some conversation with the neighbors, it really wasn't the intention to, to restrict the access. We go down Swan Pond Road right now because we're basically invited by the property owners to maintain the road. They allow us to. They each have easements over each other's property. This would really memorialize that we would in fact have the ability to, to get there. And the legal mechanism to do that, I'd leave to the attorneys to determine, but that would be the spirit of it. So we've tried, you see, we've tried to kind of combine all of this into something that's a starting point for a discussion. It's really here as a procedure. You know, I, I do think that in a perfect world, it would be a, it would be written as a bylaw, but it's not clear to me that we would be able to get Attorney General approval for a bylaw of this nature without special legislation. So in response to the discussion at town meeting, we've developed it as a policy for the board to consider. And hopefully it's a good starting point. But constructive feedback is welcome. And if it's okay, Madam Chair, I'm going to step to my seat.
Sure. Questions? Mr. Schultz?
I think, thank you very much for you and your team putting it together. My only, not a criticism, but change I would recommend is, I would give them six months to get the money versus 90 days. I think that might be a little bit tight. But I think, I think the, it, what you have here is basically what I envisioned roughly as a policy. I just think 90 days, like, took a Swan Pond, there's, I don't know how many residents there, it was about, I think, close to 20, if I remember right. I think it's a lot to have them get that together in 90 days. That's all. I think six months might be a better timeframe. That's all. But I think otherwise, the policy reads great.
Any other questions or comments?
I should add just a couple of things. I'm sorry for not saying them earlier, but I did talk with a town planner and she, you know, she did think that the planning commission might welcome the opportunity to provide some, some insight. You know, I did express to her that this doesn't really include any construction standards per se. It's more, you know, procedural. But I, I know that at least one planning commission member stood up and I believe was in favor of the project and thought we should try to address it. So we may wish to consider their feedback. And I also provided for the board members a copy of an email that I received from Don Kelleher, who was the Chair of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, along with my responses as well, to try to address where this template came from. I do have your comment. Thank you.
Mr. Walder?
I, I don't know what the original policy was, so it's a little hard to comment.
There is a one.
There was one.
This is the original.
We're creating it.
This is the start.
This is 1.0.
No, I thought that you always had a policy for, you're disintegrating in Swan Pond. Am I not hearing that right? You've always had a procedure for everything else but?
We, we did, and it's that chapter 25 bylaw, which is in the packet behind this.
Oh, so this is just specifically for Swan Pond.
This would be for, for the acceptance of roads that, for which there is not a layout at this point in time. Swan Pond being one, Traveled Way being another, and there may be a handful of others.
So the Betterment's bylaw is formulated based on the statute, and the Betterment's bylaw allows for the improvement with the buy-in of the abutting residents. And in the end, though, the street gets accepted by the city. So we take it over after that. In this case, we had no policy in place because we aren't in the business of paving private ways other than for access, you know, and public safety vehicles. So we had to kind of think about what might be appropriate for this. I guess this is prompted because of that, because of Swan Pond, but this is going to apply to any potential, any potential private way that, you know, that comes under the definition here. Any other comment? Mr. O'Leary?
A few comments. First of all, again, I applaud the administration's efforts for getting on this quickly, you know, and putting something in front of us to start to work with. So I broke it down by bullets, I guess. So on bullet three, let's see. Overall, I think, I think the board needs to maintain some sort of discretion, depending upon the set of circumstances and the uniqueness of, of the projects. You know, Swan Pond is a, is a huge undertaking and very unique as far as, you know, where it's situated and the nuances that come along with it. And I assume there'll be some other similar situations with other projects that, if they come forward by the residents, for us to consider. So, you know, like in three, you know, should we discuss based upon, you know, this is as far as, you know, the North Ring, based upon the availability of funds the town meeting shall provide, 50% of the necessary funds for projects, the town shall not pay any assessment based on a budding town-owned land. To me, that depends. Depends on where it is, you know, it depends on how much it is. I mean, up in, in Swan Pond, there's a significant portion that the town has frontage, but it's a significant project also. And the, the commitment that the town would be making would be huge. On a smaller street, you know, we may have some parcels which have frontage, and we may want to assist in, in sharing that in addition to the 50%. So I think the town, the board needs flexibility, depending upon the, the specifics. And again, I'm not sure, I guess I'd have to see the list of those ways which are, which are private. So I, so again, I just think the board needs to allow for some flexibility and discretion based upon individual projects. The next bullet, four, in order for the project to be considered, a letter signed by the owners of all properties abutting or directly impacting, that's, that's contrary to the Betterment bylaw, which is the majority of residents. And it may be in the public interest, you know, if the majority of people on a, on this private way wants to do it, you know, as is the case in Swan Pond's situation, you know, you've got everybody, you know, 24 property owners and one person's holding out. And what we're saying here is, you know, there may be, it's basically a veto authority on, over the whole thing. But again, it might not be in the public interest. And again, if the other people are willing to pick up the tab, you know, let's consider it. Allow some sort of opportunity for the, for the town to, to do that, or the board to do it. Bullet number six, which is, starts with, in the opinion of DPW Director, in relation to submitting to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, we need to be able to respond to citizen's petitions. Betterments are not necessarily handled in the same process right now. In other words, we, we have a, a listing of, of streets that are subject and ready for improvement, but if someone on a pri, on a, an accepted street, residents come forward, you know, I would anticipate that this board would be receptive to entertaining, you know, their 50/50 share. And depending on the timing, does it go to Capital Improvement Planning Committee or not, you know? But again, the board needs to have the flexibility, exercise some discretion. Again, it's all going to be subject to town meeting approval unless it's under $25,000.
Steve, I'm pushing on a point, I don't think this can go before capital, can it, Michael? Because it's private-owned land?
I'm sorry? No, no, I'm not talking currently. Like, if we have, even right now, you know, an, an accepted street.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not so sure that it would go before the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and be put off for several years because it didn't fit into our existing schedule.
No, but wasn't there a reason, Michael, that this, did these kind of projects can't go through CIPC?
So these type of projects can't be borrowed for.
That's okay.
That's the restriction.
Well, it's just got to be cash.
Let's just, let's just let Mr.
So, so to me, you know, I think being this restrictive, again, we can, we can put in here that, you know, ideally, we would like to see it go through this. This is the process we would like to see it follow, but we need to allow some sort of discretion for whoever's sitting on this board to exercise that discretion, if it's in the public interest or if it's an opportunity that we want to avail ourselves of, where the residents are ready to move forward, you know, we should strike while the iron's hot. At least have the opportunity to do that. So we need to be able to react to the individual opportunities. Number eight, again, it says in the middle of the paragraph, which is the bottom one on the first page, after, the line after not to exceed upon a vote of the majority of the property owners residing in the private street and representing a majority of the road frontage, that's contradictory to what we're saying in number four, which says that all owners, you know, you know, so it's kind of contradictory. And again, I, to me, majority is better than, you know, 100%. So we need to just get that clarified. And again, that's also contrary, if we're going to try and mirror as much as we can the Betterment bylaw, again, it's not, it's a majority, it's not 100% of the owners. So we have to be careful that that doesn't happen. And the sec, go ahead.
So I think that's an error. I think it's supposed to say all, not, rather than a majority.
I think these are two, no, these are two separate, I know these are two separate bullets. The first bullet has to be that the full owners are in agreement with it. The second bullet has to do, the, the number eight bullet has to do with, if there's a, if there's a decision amongst the majority of the members that, you know, just like with Swan Pond, you know, seven, what do we say, 16 of the parcel, of the 20 parcel owners are in agreement that they'll be contributing toward the 50% share, and they decide that amongst themselves, we could entertain that, just like we've done in Swan Pond. But Swan Pond was the, the buy-in of this board based on the contingency that every single parcel owner on Swan Pond will be saying yes and agreeing in writing that we're going to be allowed to pave this road.
Just with the authority to go on their land.
That's right. So the first bullet has to do with the permissions, not necessarily the payment, but the permissions to do it. And the second, that number eight bullet that, that you're talking about, has to do with, if they come up with another, maybe there's one benefactor on the road that'll pay for the whole thing on behalf of them, that's up to the residents to decide. So it gives them the options of, is everyone going to be contributing? Are 16 out of the 20 going to be contributing? Or if they come up with their own solution as to how they're going to contribute their 50% share, that's where I think we should just let them have the leeway to, to determine and make their own agreement and then present it to the board and, or present it to the DPW in a written agreement amongst them, so that there's something to rely on that says what their decision is.
Just, you know, just notes that I had made when I went through this. Again, the first bullet on the second page, you know, once all property owners have signed releases. And again, the assumption here is, is that all property owners are going to be on board. We may determine, I mean, the board may determine that we're okay with some people opting out, whether it be in the middle or whether it be at the end, you know? So why would we restrict ourselves?
Because of liability. We can't do work at somebody's house, doesn't give support.
No, no, I'm not saying do the work, other than what we're already doing. Every road that we're talking about here, we're already maintaining it.
Let's, just let, please let Mr. O'Leary talk.
I'm just, these are just notes that I-
Everyone's going to have a chance.
Yeah, I just went through it quickly.
Yeah.
And again, I know we're going to have lots of opportunities to, to kick it around here.
But please finish your point, and then we can all make comments and things like that. But you were talking about the first, first bullet.
The first bullet, you know, once all property owners have signed releases, I mean, again, depending upon the circumstances, depending upon the individual project, we may not need all of the property release, you know? So again, allow the board the flexibility to react to specific projects. All parcel, okay. And again, I'm all in favor of indemnifying the town and all of that sort of, but again, this would appear as though, failure of any parcel loan to execute a written agreement shall result in no request for funding for construction. Again, one parcel owner would have veto authority. That's of concern because it may be in everybody's interest to move forward. So we need the flexibility to do that. And again, DPW shall request funding for construction of the project in the next cycle of capital improvement project typically due, and again, we need the flexibility, depending upon the timing, depending upon, we're talking about the, which is bullet number, what I consider 12, one, two, three, fourth one down, the 90 days. And I agree with Mr. Schultz, you know, that may be a little bit short. And again, six months may be short, depending upon the, the construction cycle and even in the Swan Pond case, I mean, the soonest we could get anything done would be probably over a year from now. So I mean, you know, for people to come up with that money six months before it's needed, before we even have to go out and contract with anybody, we, 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 the board should have the flexibility to work it within the time constraints necessary to ensure that the town isn't putting out money upfront without their commitment also. But that may be more than 90 days, maybe, you know, maybe less. So, so again, I think we need the flexibility on the timing, you know, leave it up to the board to make it work. And other than that, that's all I have at this point. But again, I appreciate the effort that was put into putting it forward so that we can start to discuss this on a timely basis. And I look forward to, and again, I think input from the CPC, input from the public, input specifically from Swan Pond residents at this particular point in time would be helpful, just to see what their reaction is as to how it may or may not work, and what their thought process is. And again, their thought process is a little bit different than ours in some instances, but that's okay. I think what we're looking to do is have a, a policy in place which allows the board some discretion and flexibility to accomplish what everybody thinks is in everybody's best interest. So, good start.
Other members? Who's got it? Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, I think I would be, I would personally be of second glance. I think everybody has to give authorization to the town. I'm not comfortable with the town just going on private property and, they don't have to pay, all pay for it. They can divvy up the payment as, as any way they want. But I think we should have kind of a hard and fast policy here only because I don't think it's really great at times to have the board have flexibility, that, that could be abused. I think it's, if you have a hard policy, everybody knows the rules. If you want this done, this is what you have to do. I think that's, I think government should be consistent. So I, the flexibility part, I think scares me a little. And it just, everybody needs to buy in from a liability standpoint. We can't be, and I'm not in favor of paving one part of a road, taking a break, paving another part. I mean, I don't know if we're going to talk about, I think having it in here that everyone's going to sign off on it is going to avoid us paving parts of roads. That's why I think it should stay in there.
Any notes? I just have a couple of comments too about it. Which I, I think it's great it incorporated a lot of the kind of considerations that we're milling around. But I also, I too think that with respect to towns abutting parcels, I think this is so specific to the private ways and the private ways being, do not appear on a plan, have not been accepted. It's so distinct from the unaccepted, appears on a plan but hasn't been accepted yet and falls under the betterment. It's so different and distinct. And Swan Pond, I think, is a good example because of all of the contingencies involved with that. So I think it does need to be like Mr. Schultz is saying, more, more, more specific. And if that makes it a higher standard to getting it done, then so be it. And there's a reason for that. But the, I think that we should not, and no, Mr. O'Leary, you think that it gives us, we should have the discretion if we have a budding town parcels. But in a lot of these circumstances from our review of this, we're already expending public funds to sort of maintain or put some gravel down and, you know, collect the trash and plow the streets and things like that. So we're already, we've already invested to the degree that we think is appropriate, including on some of these that are, so we already have a financial obligation that we're committed to. And that's with or without regard to whether we own the parcel. So I don't think if this comes to us that the town should be expending any portion of that 50%, since the town's already coming up with the other 50% to pave this private way that isn't even going to be an accepted public way in the end. And the second thing that, you know, we talked, that you mentioned was in number four, or the fourth bullet, I think, one, two, three, fourth one down. I do think, and I agree with Mr. Schultz, every owner, whether or not they're going to contribute to the 50% portion for this particular circumstance, for a private way, I do think every single owner should be saying yes to it so we avoid any kind of, you know, taking or trespass or any kind of very conceivable claims that could be made. This town has had, you know, history of things in the past similar to that where every procedural step was taken, what the town thinks is correct, but it doesn't end up being correct or we end up having to pay in a little bit more of a penalty on what was done. So I think we do need the letter signed by each and every owner saying, yes, you're allowed to do this. Yes, I understand the plan. Yes, I know you're going to come across, especially Swan Pond Road, which goes all in and out and all over, all over private parcels, you know, yes, it's okay. And like I said, I think in Swan Pond, that was a contingency. They got this board's unanimous vote, every single one, whether they wanted it or not, had to buy into it. So it's totally --
Whether they wanted to pay for it or not.
Right. I think it's completely different than the betterments because the betterments, as again, it references a street laid out on a plan. So everybody knows and that's the way the street is and everybody has access and the plan depicts that. This is totally different where we, where using Swan Pond as an example, the street literally goes across people's front parcels and things like that. So I do think in this scenario, we need everybody's yes to it, whether or not they're going to contribute. And I think that that is a high standard, but it's also utilizing city funds to pave a private way that the owners purchased with that private way, the manner that it is. The other thing that I think is an issue here is the last bullet, I think it's number eight. I think it's number eight, one, two, three. Yeah, it's number eight on the first page. I don't think we should be saying that it should be, here we give them the not to exceed assessment cost, but where timelines are moving targets here and it could be 90 days or six months or this season or that season. We give, we should be giving the estimate, but then in the bullet of, upon approval of funding, no matter what the ultimate cost is, especially with construction costs varying here, there and everywhere, which we are familiar with, we should be saying in that bullet on the second page on approval of funding, it's the cost. Here's the final cost to it and 50% of that should be, that should, the estimate should be, what's the amount paid into the gift and whatever the result is, whether that's higher or lower, like we were talking about with Swan Pond. That's the 50%, whatever that value is, should be paid. And if it's $100,000 higher than what was anticipated at the estimate provided at the DPW hearing, then that's going to be the remainder that's owed. And there should be some agreement that that's what it's going to cost. In other words, we shouldn't bear the additional cost of that and we shouldn't be tied into what's the lower of the two. It should be, here's the cost, we're paying 50%, you're paying 50%. That's just my opinion, but I don't think we should have this language that, oh, we'll give you the lower of what it finally costs or what the estimate is that we provided. That's really not the purpose of this. And I don't, I think that should be modified.
Kate, I think what that was, was as we did the Swan Pond situation, it was a worst-case scenario with huge contingencies and they come up with 175,000 dollars. We don't anticipate that that all would be spent. So they would be returning some funds. The whole idea was that for the town to get upfront more than what was anticipated, reasonably anticipated, to cover any contingencies. And there would be a refund.
Right.
So I mean, it's, it's not like, yeah, we don't want to be a situation where we're chasing people.
We want to give them a cap, though.
Yeah, we don't want to, no, we're putting up 175, they're putting up 175.
We want to give them a cap, though.
We're going to give them a cap at 175, which is going to be, I would assume, even future boards and future administrations are going to take a very conservative approach so that nobody gets stuck where they are surprised at the end.
Right.
And then, you know, hopefully there's a refund. The town expends less and the residents would have expended less and they get refunded the money.
Right. But on the flip side of that, if there's an additional amount that comes into the design, the improvement or the construction cost, the town shouldn't be required to pay that. It should be 50-50 shared. So if it's more money, I agree that if there's a, we don't, we don't, the town isn't going to receive some sort of a profit from this gift.
No, no. I think the original estimate was $309,000, $309,000.
And a standard contingency.
And we upped it to 350. And in that 309 was a significant contingency.
Yes.
So we put an additional $40,000 contingency on it. So if there was something unforeseen, we would get surprised and then we would refund it.
Yeah. I've said it multiple times. I think that's a pretty low estimate, but I'm not the person that came up with the estimate.
Actually, it's more for Michael. We kind of, I threw out the idea of giving them six months or whatever, Steve said maybe a little bit more. Thinking about that now a little bit further, my question is, we're getting these price quotes for these projects and we're giving them a cap. We're saying residents, you're paying no greater than X, whatever that is, so they have a ceiling. But if these things get delayed a couple of years to get approved, are we building into inflation in our construction costs? We're, put it this way, if we're getting a quote now in 2019 for a project that's going to be done in construction year 2021, you know, that's why I don't know how we address that issue. So I would think I wouldn't go more than six months.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, but I want to give them enough time to pull their resources together, too.
Yeah, but that provision just, that provision is just for the residents who want this, to put the money in to get it going within the 90 days.
No, no, I'm thinking about the town's exposure, not the residents. They're capped, so they're not going. But if we, if we drag this project out two years, now the project that was 350 is now 400 just because of inflation, we're on the hook for the extra 50, not the residents.
That's why I think the previous provision of the lesser of should be --
But I think we need to give them a cap, though.
No, I think you need an estimate, just like everything else, just like you have an estimate.
But the estimate might be two years old by the time we actually put a shovel in the ground. That's what I'm saying.
So if it costs more, that's why I think we should eliminate, eliminate the provisions that says the lesser of the two.
We have to give the residents a cap, though, like the betterment statute.
I think tying it to the town meeting vote is part of the problem here. Again, we voted at town meeting $350,000. But this wouldn't go out to bid probably for at least, probably six months. Because, you know, there's October town meeting, it's not going to happen until next summer. Next summer of the, no, earlier. So you're going to go out to bid in the spring to find out what it is.
Well, they're going to get the money first before we can go out to bid.
But you're going to have to, but as far as the timing of it, depends on when the town meeting takes place. So that's why tying it to the town meeting, 90 days from town meeting vote, doesn't necessarily work. Doesn't necessarily work, just because of --
Would these be approved at town meeting or approved by the select board in the sense that we still get appropriated? Yeah.
It'd be a case by, I would assume a case-by-case basis. We take it to town meeting, either a separate, probably a separate warrant article or under the capital plan, one or the other, which is June.
So a lot of these are --
So you bid it and just, so you approve it, if you do it under the capital improvement plan, right, that's June town meeting. That may not be bid until the following spring.
Right.
So a lot of these are going to fall on, basically happenstance when the calendar, when the request comes.
With what?
A lot of this stuff, the timeline is going to really be determined on happenstance on the month the request from the residents come in.
Right.
Because it's going to be whatever the next meeting is.
Which is part of what I said, we need some flexibility here as far as the timing and how it works.
Or tying it into a specific, you know, that the gift has to be paid in by July 1st or by --
Well, that's why I don't think it needs to be spelled out here. I think at the board's discretion, depending upon what the administration says, you know, we're ready to go out to bid, so we need the money. You know, I mean, people are going to be put on notice, because first of all, they petitioned us. You know, we're not initiating anything here. So they've petitioned us, we've got a town meeting and we've gotten approval basically to get the money. And then we're going to, you know, and we've done a lot of preliminary work already. And then you're going to go out to bid, whether it's going to be next spring, if it's a June town meeting, or you're going to try and get it in in October, you know, it depends.
How did we get the estimate on Swan Pond? Was that internal or was that?
No, we had, we had a $10,000 appropriation to get a initial survey and engineering done.
That's right, I remember that now. That's another issue, is how do we, I'm just thinking like Steve's saying, the logistics and the timing of all this. Say ABC Street, residents come to us and they want their street done under this program. We got to, how do we raise the money to even get the?
It's an earlier step in the procedure, if you look back on the first page, where the DPW director either does it in-house or makes a request for funding either through small or large capital in order to get the estimate done. So I mean, this is a multiple-year process in any scenario.
So what's going to buy into the program? We're going to go get the $10,000, do the study. Okay, residents, it's going to be $350,000. And then we're going to go to town meeting.
And does that $10,000 get thrown into the 350? Is it now 360?
Not necessarily.
Under this it does, it should, right, because that's part of the design.
So it wasn't proposed in that fashion here and that's not how it was handled with Swan Pond Road. We didn't include that $10,000 in the 350.
No, but I think in the future, all costs should be 50-50.
So we would have to adjust this to include previously incurred costs.
No, but you do have that, though, design permit and construct. Yeah. Wouldn't that be part of the design, what we did?
I'm only indicating, that's not how we handled it with the Swan Pond project. If we want to change that to uncover, to include all costs, we could do that.
But Swan Pond was the catalyst to this. So this is too, this, it's not going to come to us like that anymore if we have this policy in place that allows people to do this. And maybe most likely, we won't see a lot of these either. But I also think, I do think we need to have some definitive payment and to show that, you know, this is what we want and here's our portion and moving it forward. I do think that has to have a timeline. I don't think it should be just left to, you know, if we're putting a process in place, we should pinpoint some point in that process where it makes the most sense.
I just think that depending upon the project, some are easier than others. The board can determine, okay, if we want to partner with you, you know, you've got three months to come up with the money. You know, or you've got six months to come up with, or you've got nine months, depending upon what the administration tells us.
So the board would --
So the board is going to determine, is going to determine what timelines are going to be and how we're going to go get the appropriations, how we're going to go get the money and when do we need their money.
But it would be after town meetings. They never would, they wouldn't go get the money until town meeting approves the project.
But they, but hopefully when you go to town meeting, which isn't the case with Swan Pond at this particular point in time, you would know what the timeline is. You know, my, my anticipated hope would be that when someone comes forward with a project of this magnitude and we're going to, and the board's going to buy into the idea, we'll know what construction sees that it's going to happen if town meeting approves it, you know. Because I could foresee the capital improvement committee saying no to all of these projects and putting it in the queue with everything else.
Right.
But the board may determine that it's in the public's interest.
Special appropriation.
Just to go in it, go get it done, you know, outside of the normal operating, because this is outside of the norm.
But I think, whether it's 90 days. Whether it's 90 days or 180 days, it would be after town meeting, so I think that part's accurate. That's what triggered them getting the funding into us.
Although it wouldn't work in this particular case.
What do you mean?
Because it's October.
It's not going to happen in 90 days.
It's not construction.
No, but they can still get the money in.
They can still get the money.
Yeah, but why would we want them to tie up their money for a year or 18 months?
Because we want to make sure people are serious about this project.
You know, they're serious about it, but, you know, it's a lot of money.
Our money's being tied up.
I'm just saying, it's $10,000 to $12,000 per person who's going to kick in here in the Swan Pond case. And you're going to tie up their money and nothing's going to happen for two years.
Our town's money's being tied up in the same amount of time.
But it's, it's different. It's a cash flow. It's not a household, you know, it's not a household that's being disrupted.
Yeah, the town, we should put in, held in a non-interest bearing escrow account. Yeah, that's a good point, so.
You know, we're just, again, they've come to us and they're willing to disrupt the cash flow in their household in order to get something improved in their neighborhood, in their street. But if it's going to take us two years to do it, why do we need to tie up their money for two years? You know, other than, again, we can phase it in, 50% at this point and then, but it should be at the discretion of the board, depending upon how the project is going to lay out.
I think the whole idea, Steve, why it's good to do it upfront is because houses can get sold, property can change hands in those two years. What if the new people, so we want to have it locked in before we start wasting resources and time on the project. So if it means we're holding the money for two years, that's an occupational hazard with this project. What if you get two new owners and they don't want to do it? And then now you got the, you know, so I think it should be something in here in the sense that the time for residents' approval and authorizations, we can't have a situation, I'm talking in riddles here, we can't have a situation where, yeah, we get all the money in, we get all the approvals in and then before we put a shovel in the ground, this property is sold and this new owner, he or she doesn't want it and they, so how do we tie that loop up? Am I, I don't know if I'm making any sense here, but a new owner comes in before the shovel hits the ground?
You're an attorney who handles residential, you know, transfers, so it becomes an encumbrance on the property.
Well, that's why we have to lock everything in at a time, sir.
But you lock it in, whether you lock it in dollars and cents wise or lock it in, you know, so as it changes hands. The other way, the closing, the money gets put up in escrow for the next owner to get the betterment.
I don't think we're recording something on every property that we need.
That's another interesting point.
You know what I'm saying, Kate?
We should put in that until the payments, there'll be a lien recorded against each parcel. I'm only kidding.
I don't think we can.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Mrs. Gonzalez.
I know you're saying you're kidding, but to a point, to a point, though, I thought that we all agreed that that money had to come up before we would do anything.
Before we go out to bid. Before we go out to bid.
So take Swan Pond out of the mix here. Let's just take Swan Pond out. We're thinking of it in that context because we did everything, the reverse of what this policy would call it. So take that out.
All right.
Take, take a, you know, potential new private way coming forward under this policy, right? So we did say to Swan Pond, and the money has to be in, and all the residents have to tie in or buy in or agree, right? But let's take this, this, let's just take, you know, hypothetical scenario. So what you are saying is that we should, we should, we should direct or decide the deadline for that resident portion to come in based on whatever timeline is going on here in terms of budgeting, you know, DPW work, what's in the queue and then what, what we need to do to design it, et cetera. Is that what you are saying?
And I think you have to have something recordable form, registry deeds.
I want to say, Swan Pond, let's use Swan Pond specifically. I mean, if we were to have a policy in place, maybe the policy should say, you come to a request for us to take a look at this. It's going to cost us $10,000 to evaluate and decide whether we want to do it or not. We need $5,000 upfront. You put up five, we put up five.
Yeah.
All right, put it upfront, we'll do the evaluation. It says $350,000. Do you want to buy in or not?
So that's an addition then, that has to be added in.
I'm thinking aloud here. If you're thinking about process, how do we want it to work?
Starting from that.
You know, so if this board decides, you know, without town meeting approval through our counter appropriations, whether it be through DPW or all the rest, that we want to do an evaluation based upon a request from a neighborhood, it's going to cost $10,000. So we'd be happy to entertain it if you want to split the cost, 50%. It costs $10,000 to do the evaluation. Come in with your $5,000 bucks, we'll put up the $5,000 and we'll evaluate it. Then both sides will say, yeah, project cost is going to be -- Then both sides will say, yeah, project cost is gonna be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do you still wanna move forward?
Right.
Yes or no, so all the way through the process is a fifty fifty split. And then from a timing standpoint, you know, fine, we'll go get the money with appropriation, and again, we'll hash it out here whether it's gonna be through the capital improvement planning process, you know, through June town meeting, or whether it's gonna be through a separate town meeting warrant to undertake it, and what the timelines are. Say, okay, we're gonna do it, but it won't be until, we'll appropriate the money this fiscal year, it won't be spent till next fiscal year because of the timing of the project for the seasons, right? Say, okay, and at this point, when we want to bid, we need X number of dollars upfront. And if the cost of the bids exceed this amount, additional funding needs to be contributed, you know, or we reject the bids. You know, so the time is gonna be driven by the bidding in the appropriation process.
Okay.
What, I'm just thinking, now, now I have my real estate attorney hat on, there is an issue that we have to think about is, when is quote unquote approval by all residents given to start the project? And every deed holder that is giving that approval should sign something that's in recordable form at the Cambridge Registry of Deeds because that has to run with the land and be, um, a- attached to future owners. What if in that eight, cause I can see where it'd be eighteen, twenty-four months for this project to be done, for any of these projects, you know, realistically. If a house is sold in the interim, then new owner has to be, uh, be on record that this restriction is on their house, otherwise it's not, it doesn't pass out to the new owner, then you could go through all this project and then eighteen months later, somebody buys one of the houses in the development, they don't give their authorization and then the project's done.
Yeah, but you would, if these, this is why it should be in writing, and that written authorization is gonna be applicable to any successor and interest, transfer.
Yes, but it needs to be recorded to registry of deeds, they have to be on notice of it.
I think we're overthinking it, I don't think it needs to be recorded because.
It absolutely does.
Let's say Mr. Smith signs off and signs that form with all the legal language that we need to be comfortable. And it includes any successor and interest, any party to whom the parcel is subsequently conveyed or transferred. That then becomes a requirement for that to be disclosed in any subsequent transaction.
No, that needs to be on record to registry of deeds, otherwise that new owner is not on, not on notice of that requirement. Yeah, it has to be a recordable form to be enforced, and in every single house, it's seventy-five bucks to record these documents. But you have to have it recordable, cause when they do their title exam when they're buying the property, they have to be on notice of the restriction. Uh, the new, what if Smith signs it and doesn't tell Jones that buying the house? Jones isn't subject to that, and Jones could put, I mean, uh, these are real things I can see coming up as I'm sitting here.
Yeah, but that's okay, seventy-five bucks is seventy-five bucks. If they take it's included.
But I think we wanna add.
I think, I think Smith and Jones know where the road is and Smith.
Jones is buying the house.
Right, but Smith is gonna tell Jones and buy them.
Jones is new to the neighborhood, has no idea, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't disagree, but it's fine, you know, just agree.
That should be built into the, to the, um.
The cost.
Also into the policy too.
Alright.
You got that, Mike?
I have it, yes.
I know.
I just don't know, I just don't know that we have the authority to do it.
But if they are willing, if they are willing subjects.
They're voluntarily doing it.
Voluntarily doing it.
Yeah.
That's all.
They, they should wanna do it, cause it protects their project.
Sure.
Against somebody killing it at the last minute.
Alright, someone other than us would like to participate in this discussion, may I, may I?
You really want?
Absolutely.
I just have free reality check comments.
Okay. Need those sometimes.
Yeah, we're into the, we're into the thick of it.
Do they cost money?
Well, well, no.
Alright, that's alright.
The, the first reality check comment is, I think, I don't know if it would be town council or somebody else, but I think you're right.
Yeah.
Um, that.
Good comment.
You should never, no, well, I don't think you are, but anyway, right now I think you are.
I disagree, I object, I disagree, I totally disagree.
You should never assume because someone signs a consent form that they're ever going to tell anyone else that they have. So if somebody goes to sell a house, you can't assume they're gonna tell their realtor or anyone who would be going to buy the house that they've signed it.
It needs to show the chain of title to registry.
Yeah, so in some way, it would need to be a recordable side first of all. Um, and because you're right about the seasons in New England and you can't count on getting anything out to bid and pay promptly, um, I think you do need to figure out to what extent, and you're right there, that you don't know to what extent, as community, you have the right to tie up somebody legally or not. I think you need to check with the appropriate legal authority to see whether or not you can ask someone to sign a consent saying, yes, I have, I get consent to have you pay my parcel, my allotment of, of the street, um, and then bind them to it. And or it's essentially voluntary and they can draw it anytime. Second of all, I don't know if you can check with other municipalities to see if, if someone has already cut that glitty lot, knows the answer about whether or not you can do something with private ways to tie something up for a certain amount of time. To check that, and the third thing, and this is incredibly minor, but it's grating at me. Shortly after I had my accident, I was approved for, for the National Journal of Medicine. And, um, residents, when you talk about picking up the residence portion, it would be S apostrophe every time, and at least once it was T apostrophe S, which would actually make it a singular, not a plural, and I think you would. That was my reality check.
I like that one.
Which, which bullet was that?
It was one of the ones earlier.
How did you miss that?
How do you win one of the arguments with her? You've been through all the arguments, that's my man.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, I'll go with her.
So I guess we have a lot of, why don't we put this on the agenda to discuss further at our next meeting?
As the board wishes, it doesn't need a member to participate in the conversation with town council. I think that that's gonna be necessary to make sure we're addressing some of these legal questions.
I would be happy to volunteer, if, if my members would like to do that.
I'd be happy to let you volunteer.
That was a little bitter.
I second that.
So I guess we'll.
But I, I was just gonna ask, can you do like a, like a, you know, send it by bullets, can you just do like a one page, you know, it starts here, goes here, goes there, just so we can just graphically see it? It's just taking what you have for words and putting it into a PowerPoint flowchart, just to make it easier for us to, to sure understand this.
Understanding, this came together rather quickly, so you did a very job.
Lost on our half hour discussion, thank you, this is a very involved thing you guys put together, it's a very good job.
Thank you.
Great that we're arguing with the comments going, but it's very impressive.
Poststrokes.
Poststrokes.
That will never get, I would never let that happen, that's a belief of mine.
Candidly, my, I think the DPW director and I are just concerned that, you know, we'll, we'll have fourteen sign offs show up from Swan Pond Road and the question will be, are we ready to proceed with the project if we don't wanna be the obstacle to it? That's why we wanted to move on this quickly. I don't know what the timeline is with the status is with the residents, but.
No, I think it was made clear when the residents were here that everybody had to sign off on that. That was really clear and direct. We can go back to that me, me, that.
No, that, we definitely made that clear.
No, it was, you're right.
Yeah, that was very clear.
So I don't, uh, aren't we looking for nineteen?
Whatever the number is, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to.
Oh, alright, okay. Oh, Mrs. Gonzalez, I'm sorry.
I'm just, um, playing around in my head with, is there a timeline that would be perfect for, that would line up right? That we could make it so that, okay, your proposal has to be given to us by this time so that we can propose it at this town meeting, so that it can go out to bid at this point and this, so that it can move forward? Can we have just a, like a timeline, so you can't just randomly come and petition us? If you want to petition us, it has to be by this date so that it can fall in line, so that it can move quickly?
We could do that, I, I do think, you know, to be clear, it's, it's likely to take at least two town meeting votes to advance these project. One for any resources that might be needed to assist the DPW in coming up with an estimate, and one for the approval of the construction. And as, as has been noticed, as has been noted, even with a June town meeting approval for construction, highly unlikely we'll be doing construction that construction season, it'll be the next year. But I think we could work into the, Mr. Wallner suggesting the flowchart, maybe, you know, ideal dates. If you wanna keep this moving on the fastest possible schedule, here's when you'll apply.
Yes, right. Yes, yeah.
Mister, Ms. Gonzalez, you all said?
Mm-hmm.
Mister Lee?
I think that there should be money, and again, it was ten thousand dollars for Swan Pond, and that was a pretty significant project. I think there should be money in the DPW budget to react to residents' requests. And if the board's favorable action move forward, we shouldn't have to go to town meeting for five or ten thousand dollars to investigate something to see if we wanna do it. To me, you know.
That's our system of government.
No, 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 but it, no, it's part of the appropriation process, there should be money in the DPW budget to react to residents' requests and if the board's, you know, favorable recommendation to move forward on it.
So we don't have to wait for that part of it.
You know, the administration isn't gonna necessarily, DPW director, go ahead and, because someone requested it, go ahead and do it. It's gonna come to the board, the board's gonna act favorably on it or not, if they act favorably on it, then the money's available to do it. I mean, rather than waiting, you know, if they come in in February, it won't get till June.
Right.
You know, and then you won't be able to find out until October or November, you know, from once the consultants are done. It just doesn't make, doesn't make sense, so, you know, you put in ten or fifteen thousand dollars in the general operating budget for the DPW for outside professional services, of which, I don't know, it's a matter to request aid by the general public for situations such as this. Again, I don't anticipate a lot of activity in, we haven't had it in thirty years, haven't had a lot, you know.
Do we have that?
Yeah, well, this for thirty years, Swan Pond, right?
This one, yeah, this one we've been doing.
Do we have a, a general standing appropriation for betterments, under the betterments bylaw?
No.
My concern, Steve, is like every department that comes before us in budget season, they like, have every dollar used up, I don't see any like ten thousand dollar contingency fund for, I mean.
You know, put it in the town administrator's budget, again, I think the town administrator's budget is light as far as professional services and, and things of that nature, we've been talking every year. Put, put it up a little bit so that it allows some flexibility within the calendar year, within appropriation time, or timelines, to work on a more timely basis. Just makes, it, it's not a lot of money and it needs to be there, and if it isn't used, it gets reverted back, re-appropriated. But you shouldn't have to go to town meeting for five or ten thousand dollars. If the board's in favor of taking a look at it, and half of the cost is gonna be, if the balls are gonna say, half of the cost is gonna be shared by the residents.
Right.
You know, let's take a look at something, so then we can go to town meeting, I don't think I'm in it in February, by June, media proposal, heart's dead in the water. You know, so, I just, we shouldn't be appropriating every dollar while it's appropriated from town meeting. There needs to be some flexibility from the administrative standpoint and the board's standpoint to react to requests from residents in certain situations, not just this one, but, you know, we shouldn't have to go to town meeting for five thousand dollars to take a look at something. And it's, cause otherwise, if I'm those residents, I'm going to citizens' petition room. You know, and that's what we're trying to avoid, we're trying to set up a, a policy that's gonna work within certain timelines so things can be done on a timely basis and determinations can be made. If we're pigeonholing ourselves into a situation where, oh, we haven't got the money to take a look at it, but you all have got the money to assist us to do it, it doesn't make much sense, and it's not a lot of money, no.
No, right.
So maybe a more, um, delineated process that starts with that, with, you know, we'll look into it first, evaluate it first to determine if it should move forward, and as part of that assessment, any experts hired or utilized, you pay half down, pays half not to exceed a specific amount.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we know it, you know, the town spent ten thousand dollars through town meeting, appropriated the money to take a look at it. And that was, that's twenty-seven hundred feet of roadway.
Right, that was the.
With the drainage and everything else involved with it, a significant amount of work.
Right.
And while it was cursory, it gave us a good, you know, good idea and a very conservative estimate as to what the project costs were gonna be. Anything else left in town in this particular category, are small roads?
Not near a public water supply too.
Right.
Right. A lot less complicated.
require drainage systems.
Right, so I mean, you know, so if you have five or ten thousand, five thousand dollars, you know, within the operating budget for professional services just available in case something comes up, whether it was this or something else.
Yeah, kinda makes sense.
Yeah.
Rather than going to town meeting, every single time you need five bucks, doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
That's what we do.
No, it's not what we do generally, but it's, in this particular case, we did because of the citizens' petition. You know, we asked them to be patient, came up with a plan, get ten thousand instead of buying, writing off the whole thing. Find out what the cost and quantify it, and then go back to town meeting. But in a policy now that we're developing, we should have the resources available to react to it.
No, that makes sense. I think, I think we, we have talked a lot about this, and I know that there, that that's an awful lot for the town administrator to take back. So what I would ask the members to do is, um, in these areas of improvement, so that we can get this on paper and take another look at it at the next meeting, review it a little bit more to maybe make a more firm process or add in these extra sort of considerations is, put that on paper and send it to the town administrator so we can consider these other options, I guess, for this. But I don't, I think we do, we, we kind of are overthinking it a little bit, I don't think we need a recordable instrument. I think you can just write in the written authorization.
You absolutely don't.
For example, you could write in the written authen, we don't require betterments. You say, this is binding and anniers to the benefit of your successors and you're required to disclose it in any conveyance or transfer.
And that's recorded, and that's recorded.
No, that, we're not.
Betterments are recorded.
No, but we, we would be not accepting this road, but we would be making that requirement upon the particular participant and making it their obligation and.
It doesn't work that way.
And holding us harmless.
It doesn't work that way.
Well, I'm just saying, we are overcomplicating something that, you know, the fact of the matter is.
I love to hear the lawyers debating.
No, no, when they, no, seriously, Kate, when a town does a betterment, they record a notice of betterment listing all the people that are affected. So everyone, so prospective owners are on notice, you absolutely have to do that here. Otherwise, you're gonna have, you run the risk of somebody coming in that bought the house at the last minute saying, I don't want this, and now you're stuck. And the town's invested all these resources into the project.
You're, you're talking about one document recording that this is a prospective roadway improvement and it affects these parcels. That's what you're talking about.
But the people have to sign it.
Similar to what you're doing with the betterment.
A little different, the town makes a notice of betterment and lists all the properties that are affected by, town's putting a sewer in on these particular streets, not north running, by the way, Juan, this is an example. Off, and they'll list all the properties that are affected, so if somebody's looking to buy the house, they can see, oh, betterment's coming here. And they can't, but a betterment's different, cause betterments.
Right.
Don't require everybody's approval, that's where, a little bit different than this project.
So we're, you know, we are creating this policy which deals with the anomaly, private ways. We keep looking at it in the lens of Swan Pond, which is really quite different in all of the contingencies and.
Well, it covers all, most categories that we could have, which is good.
I know. It was a good, good one to cut our teeth on, but I think just, if you could give your specific, the specific things that you think should be, you know, modified individually, not to each other, not to one another, but just directly to Mr. Gilberto, and let's see if, if, you know, in all of his spare time, he can incorporate.
Maybe I can get it right.
Incorporate.
We'll call town council.
These types of things, I think you should keep on paper what you have as presented.
Mm-hmm, and we'll do a marked up version.
And then, let's mark it up and see if we can come up with something, I think this is an amazing start, I think it's, you know, we're seventy percent of the way there.
Excuse me.
Hopefully the residents of Swan Pond are ninety percent or a hundred percent of the way.
Be interesting if it ever comes to a little bit of.
Getting everything, alright, so, so let's, if we can move on, well, we will keep this on the agenda for further discussion and further, um, policymaking. Alright, so our next order of business is Open Space and Recreation Advisory Committee approve the charge and establish a committee and designate the board members.
Madam Chair, through you, just a brief description, this is really a, a committee that's being proposed by the town planner and the Parks and Recreation Operations Manager to work with a consultant who will, uh, be drafting our Open Space and Recreation Plan, which is something that we are required to do to be eligible for state grant funding for certain environmental projects. You know, basically, they're recommending that there be an advisory committee to work with the consultant, who we've already gone through a procurement process for, um, in, in order to, um, to advise the consultant, which will be the Metropolitan Area Planning Council in developing the, um, the plan. To establish the committee, um, we've basically recommended that the board vote to establish it. It would be a, a standalone committee that would sunset at the conclusion of the planning process, uh, when the select board signs off on the plan to be submitted. process when the select board signs off on the plan to be submitted to the state. You see that we've identified here that they would be, would be small, represented by the Parks and Recreation Department, Operations Manager and Parks Director, the Land Utilization Committee, the Planning Department, the Conservation Department, the Select Board, if it wishes to have a member participate, and the Recreation Committee. And so we're recommending a two-step process, first to vote to establish the committee, and then second to vote to appoint members to the committee as well. And the committee would be subject to the open meeting law, so there would be posted meetings and the public will be welcome to attend the meetings as well.
Okay. Do members have any questions? Do we have a motion?
There is a motion to establish the committee and then also a motion to appoint its members.
So, Madam Chair, I move to establish the Open Space and Recreation Plan, OSRP Committee, and to approve charge as recommended by the town planner.
Second?
I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And I believe there's a second motion for the appointment of the members.
There is. Are we choosing a board member or choosing not to have a board member before we?
Yes, I would recommend that. Yes.
Don't all raise your hands at once.
I guess the question is, should be a liaison versus a member?
Right, what?
I think that the, there to be an actual member of the committee. I mean, you may wish to be one of the liaisons to the committees that are mentioned in the membership, but it does not have to be.
We'll get a volunteer after we, after we.
We can establish the committee and not designate the board member at this point. The committee will probably begin its work because of the timeline.
I think it's a, I think it's a great idea to have a board member serving on the committee and whatever the committee ultimately determines comes to the board anyway for consideration.
Do we have a liaison for?
Yes, I think it's everybody.
But it's split.
Who's Parks and Rec?
There's multiple liaisons, right.
Who's Parks and Rec liaison?
No, we have an LUC.
Actually.
I'm LUC.
I'm Conservation.
Uh, hold on, I put my glasses on.
So each one of us will take a turn at each meeting.
It's alphabetical, is it alphabetical? Maybe on the recreation as opposed to.
Land, LUC is you, Liam, right?
I know what you say, yeah.
Oh, you are. Okay. How missing am I? Should it be forms? Well, I think we can at least, we can just determine the member, but at least let's consider the vote to make the committee, establish the committee membership.
We don't have a Parks and Rec laser.
Parks and Rec doesn't exist.
Hmm, that's not surprising.
Is it part of something else? Or named different?
Should it be?
No.
We have a map, C rep.
You got an APC rep.
LUC rep, oh, LUC liaison.
Does he have a APC? Rich, no.
No.
Hey, Kate, we have a APC rep.
Yes, that's how come I know, that's how come I know we have. All right.
It's interesting, should there be a liaison to the Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, yeah.
Sign it on the list.
We have, we have a lot of obligations. Yes, we do.
I wouldn't mind it.
Dominant.
But no.
We're going to, by show of hands, find out who might want to volunteer for this one. Let's at least establish the committee membership.
I think i- if one of the two newest members are willing to do it, no, just from a continuity standpoint, there's at least two and a half years here that you're going to be participating in this thing. That would be helpful.
Right.
Rather, you know, next year, if he only takes it and he's up and decides not to run or gets defeated, then we're going to do it all over again and someone's getting into it, you know? Kate and I have a year and a half left, so.
Okay.
So if one of the two newer members is interested, then that makes it a little bit easier and it lends for some more continuity. And it's actually a pretty interesting project.
How about if we establish the committee membership first?
That's a good idea.
And then we'll move to appoint our member.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to appoint the following members for terms to expire December 2020. Maureen Stevens, Parks and Rec Department, Marty Tilton, Parks and Rec Department, Danielle McKnight, Planning Department, Randy Mason, Conservation Commission, Rita Mullin, Recreation Committee.
What about Phil Hertz?
So let me.
LUC.
Oh, yeah, you know what? He's not listed, it's just an oversight.
So.
It's Phil Hertz.
Phil Hertz, LUC.
LUC.
P-H-I-L-H-U.
H-E-R-T-Z.
H-E. Before we get to appointing specifically named members, we have just created this committee. The membership of the committee should be the next vote, so that should be the Parks and Rec Director, the appointee from the LUC, right? The Planning Director.
Yes.
The Conservation Commission appointee, the Select Board Member, and the Parks and Recreation appointee. It shouldn't be specifically named individuals yet, because we're creating this committee. So when these individuals, if, when they go, that will know a committee membership has to be made up of these particular designated positions or designees.
In the previous motion, we referenced the attachment, and it's only the first page of the attachment which describes the committee, but not the specific members. So the seats were already created.
Okay.
I think the oversight is, when we listed the proposed members, we neglected Mr. Hertz.
Okay, so as part of.
We have two suggestions for Parks and Recreation Department, as far as the list goes. It says a minimum of five stakeholders, but not limited to. So, yeah, to your point, Madam Chair, if you were talking about, we're going to say Parks and Recreation Director, the, what's Marty's title?
Parks Director.
Parks Director, Recreation Director.
Right.
Will be a member, you know, a designee from the Land Utilization Committee, the Town Planner, a designee from the Conservation Commission, a designee from the Recreation Committee, and then a designee from the Select Board.
Can you say that again slowly, Mr. O'Leary? Because that's what the motion should be, the committee makeup, committee membership makeup shouldn't really be name specific, it should be post-specific or designee of specific. But you, you said that rather quickly and I just want to make sure.
The Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee shall be represented by, it's Maureen is Parks Director?
See, we're talking about, not the people, but the positions. So the Parks and Recreation Department Operations Manager.
Okay, so Parks and Recreation Operations Manager, the Parks Director.
Parks Director.
Parks Director. A designee from the Land Utilization Committee.
Mm-hmm.
The Town Planner, a designee from the Conservation Commission, a designee from the Parks and Recreation Committee, and a designee from the Select Board.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we move on to appointing the specific individuals to serve. Before we do that, because it's a collective list of names of the newer members of the Select Board, could you raise your hand if you'd like to volunteer? Eeny, meeny, miny, moe.
Can we do it together?
Well, here's, the only thing I.
So if one can't make it, the other.
Well, here's my only thing I'll say is, is that I fully suspect that when we have the sewage and we have the facilities master plan and we have the CPC plan going through, I've been proposing for a long time, for years now, that we're going to need a task force. That should include a person from the Select Board. And I actually think, well, I think I've had the most involvement with all those topics. So, I'm not saying I should do it, I'm just saying somebody from.
For what, for this project?
No.
No, for, I think that in order to implement any of these three or two or three major objectives, I think you're going to need a task force, somebody from CPC, somebody from, I mean, you're going to need to go across departments to make it work.
Well, wastewater, we had one, remember, Steve, you remember that? There was a wastewater task force, remember, I want to say the last iteration, seven, eight years ago? There was actually a committee, I think it's still on the books. The members have turned out.
I'm just expecting that.
I think you want to keep yourself open.
I do want to, I do, I want to, I want to make myself available for that.
So therefore, he went like this.
How?
He went like this.
I'd love to do it.
Not that either is, not that either is a bad choice to be involved, I just think I'd be better utilized there.
So I am, so I am not putting my name, I am crossing names out here, correct?
No, you're going to put your name.
I, I mean, we just said what we were doing, designees.
We just, we just made that motion and voted on it, okay, which isn't in the packet, which didn't make. So now you're going to make it, including the names.
Now you're going to name the names.
And including yourself.
Name the names, including.
Name the names and include yourself.
If you want to do it, you're not forced to do it.
No, no, no.
You had your hand on it, so.
You did have to volunteer them.
Still up.
It's still up.
No, is that Leanne, is that okay? Does that make sense?
Yes, fine. Maureen Stevens, do I have to, I'm just doing the names.
No, you say for Parks and Recreation, Maureen Stevens and Marty Tilton.
You moved the following individuals.
I moved the following individuals as members for terms to expire December 2020. Maureen Stevens, Parks and Rec Department, Marty Tilton, Parks and Rec Department, Danielle McKnight, Planning Department, Randy Mason, Conservation Commission, Rita Mullin, Recreation Committee, Phil Hertz, LUC Committee, Leanne Gonzalez, Select Board Member.
Second.
Me either.
I have a motion and a second with a vote call list, or are we okay to?
I don't have a vote, I just have a.
All right, all those, any further discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous. There you go, congratulations. You're on another committee.
That's a good position.
Yes, yeah, it's a great one. Okay, we have next order of business, vote to approve the retiree health insurance plan. Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, the board did in fact vote to approve the 2020 retirement health insurance plan for Blue Cross Blue Shield subscribers. However, we have now received the renewal for the Tufts Health Plan, similarly, similarly favorable at a four point five percent increase. The only plan design change, other than the CMS, Centers for Medicaid Services, ordered changes is the routine annual eye exam co-pay will increase from ten dollars to fifteen dollars. We are asking the vote to, the board to rescind its vote made at the October seventh meeting and revote the approval of both plans, and that is all worded into one motion. And by the way, this has also already been reviewed with the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I move to rescind the vote of October seventh, 2019, and to vote as follows. I move to approve the retiree health insurance plans, Blue Cross Blue Shield MedX, no plan design changes, and Tufts Medicare preferred. One plan change, routine eye exam co-pay increase, ten dollars to fifteen for calendar year 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Schultz. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, Conservation Commission appointments is our next order of business.
Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following name for appointment as a member of the Conservation Commission to fill an unexpired term through December 31st, 2020. One opening, Thomas Sanchez.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Sanchez was one of the newly appointed alternate members, associate members last year, an active participant in consultation with the recommendation of the Chair of the Conservation Commission, recommending that the board appoint Mr. Sanchez.
Okay, wonderful. I have a.
Again, this is to fulfill Mr. Weiss's unexpired term.
Okay. Motion and a second. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Walner.
Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sanchez.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Mr. Sanchez.
And Mr. Sanchez. Unanimous. Okay, our next order of business is approval of legal bills.
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for September 2019 in the amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents as follows. Coleman Page General, five thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty cents. Coleman Page PC Labor, ten thousand, one hundred and one dollars. Twenty Elm Street 40B Project, three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. Grand total, nineteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're on to the, is that, it's the legal bills.
Yes.
Now, our next order of business is the town administrators' report. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I attached a copy of the town's appeal to the State Department of Housing and Community Development's denial of our safe harbor concerning the Twenty Elm Street proposed Chapter 40B project. The appeal was authorized by the zoning board of appeals on October 10th and is now posted on the town's website. The community impact team issued apparent alert concerning black market vaping, which I attached to the report. The Director of Human Resources recently traveled to Croatia earlier this month. He presented a town of North Reading pin to the Honorable W. Robert Kohorst, which is the, who is the U.S. Ambassador to Croatia, and I included a copy of the picture of the presentation in my report. There was also a picture of Mr. Cohen's attendance at a joint military maneuver attached to my report. So I thank him for spreading the North Reading diplomacy across the ocean in his travels. Attached, please find a copy of the town's annual stormwater permitting report. Flu clinics organized by the Health Department have been ongoing. The final clinic is Wednesday, October 30th, this Wednesday, for children ages three to eighteen, and a full schedule is attached. I'm pleased to report that Police Chief Michael Murphy has designated the responsibilities of executive officer to Lieutenant Thomas Romeo. Lieutenant Romeo has been with the department since 1985, rising to the rank of sergeant in 2008 and detective lieutenant in 2012. And this assignment was recently agreed to with, in negotiations with the Police Department Superior Officers Union, in the agreement that was signed earlier this fall. Water Department hydrant flushing has been ongoing and is anticipated to conclude this Wednesday, October 30th, on the east side of town. Andover is also flushing their system in the vicinity of our connections on Main Street and Central Street, and is scheduled to conclude their flushing on November 29th. Household hazardous waste day is Saturday, November 2nd, from nine AM to 12 noon, that's this coming Saturday, at the DPW Yard. Please see the attached flyer. Fall curbside yard waste collection will occur on Saturdays, November 23rd and December 14th. Please see the attached flyer. As usual, the DPW Yard will be open Saturdays through November from eight AM to four PM, and Sundays in November only from 12 noon to four PM for leaf disposal. The Police Department will once again be participating in No Shave November. Chief Murphy will be releasing additional information later this week. To assist residents, installers, real estate agents, and anyone dealing with septic system related issues, the Health Department has posted a guideline for reference on the town website. The guideline may be found on the, on the website, and I've attached a copy for the board's reference. Finally, attached, please find an updated mosquito advisory from the Health Department. While mosquito activity is decreasing, residents are reminded that the true end of the season occurs when we see four consecutive hours of temperatures of twenty-eight degrees or less. And that concludes my comments, thank you.
That was almost as long as the meeting.
It had a lot to say.
Can you just explain the purpose for No Shave November? Is it to save on the cost of razor blades?
It is to raise awareness to, to particular issues, and I'd rather defer to the police chief who's going to put out a press release, I think, in the next couple of days. But it is tied to awareness.
Yes. All right. Any questions of the TA? Any, any other, any other old and new business to the members?
Nope.
Motion, Madam Chair?
Just, just quickly, again-
Oh, sorry, Mr. O'Leary.
Just on a couple of things that were already brought up earlier during our board members' reports. But first responder day, you know, I guess it was today, and I know Mrs. Gonzalez and myself both have first responders, there's kids now, white kids or adults are out there every day, so there's certainly a greater appreciation in our household, a little bit longer in her household, since her husband was the first responder for many years. But again, I thank you to the chamber for recognizing that and putting on the event that they did today. Again, town meeting attendance, as Mrs. Gonzalez brought up, was heartening to see so many people there and a level of activity, and I got a lot of comments that evening, but also even afterwards, subsequently, since town meeting bumped into a lot of people who were somewhat entertained by the process. And, and I think it stimulated some interest, and we're going to see some additional participants, which is, which is a good thing. You know, the more the merrier, and we want to hear from everybody, and we hope that continued participation remains high and interest remains high, and maybe with that, some more people who are interested in serving on town boards and committees. But they did get a good picture of how town meeting can work or not work. Worked well, they got a lot of exposure to some parliamentary maneuvering, which is not usually happening, so it really was a very good and interesting meeting. So I'm glad they participated, I hope they, people continue to, to come and voice their opinion, because it is a perfect form of government. Your vote actually counts. You raise your hand and you count it and you determine how much is going to be spent and what's going to be-
Counts as much as our vote.
That's right.